Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. We appreciate Fayette High School for hosting our meeting tonight. We've enjoyed, the boards enjoyed moving among the three schools over the last three months. And it's always good to get back in the schools and see things and see people. So, thank you, thank you, FHS for hosting us tonight. We appreciate it. And, board members, you have before you a proposed agenda for the evening. We want to take a look at that. Board would be open for a motion that we approve this or we can make changes as you see fit.
We approve it.
So, have a motion?
Say it.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Great. Well, if everyone would please rise for the play of the board.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Board members, you have the minutes from the March 4 regular board meeting in an email. Board would be open for a motion that we approve these minutes or make any changes you would like to suggest. So moved, alright. Now, motion? And a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Alright. You also today have disbursements for the month of March in an email. Take a moment. If you haven't done so already, take a moment and look at those. The disbursement to Arians says, "I sound electrical for welding."
So, that's part of the grant?
Right.
So, we are paying for some of the material and effort to make sure that they've got the appropriate electrical hookups.
Right. It's more, it's the hookups, not the electric, it's not electric. No, no, it's the third though, it's, it's-
It's an increased infrastructure for the classroom that we use.
Yeah, infrastructure. Gotcha. Gotcha. Yeah, I was remembering that they were covering the power bill, the electric bill each month.
Yes, sir.
Great.
It will be approved.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the disbursements? And a second. Any discussion or further questions? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Principals reports. We have a special podium.
I do. Oh, I guess.
This is one of our teachers, I think your, FHS has this city.
Tonight, I have Ms. Ruby Wright. Some water? You want some water?
Well, dang.
I'm gonna get her some water, and she's gonna report for Askins tonight.
Good evening. My name is Ruby Wright, and I'm a fourth grade student at Ralph Askins. I love RAS because all the teachers at Ralph Askins are very kind. I also get to participate in different activities because I'm a member of Beta Club and the morning show. Today, we would als, we were, today, we were able to learn about and celebrate the solar eclipse. We were provided eclipse glasses to view the eclipse. It was a fun experience. At this time, I would like to share some upcoming events. Our TCAP testing for second through fifth grade will begin on April 16th and last until April 26th. We will have a TCAP parade on the, on April 15th at nine o'clock. We will have, and we have invited parents and community members to come and cheer on our Tigers as they prepare to take a test. If you would like to participate in the parade, please gather in the annex parking lot right before 9:00 a.m. on April 15th. Mark your calendars, mark your calendars. On May 10th, RAS will be participating in Tiger tracks. More information regarding this day will be coming soon. Thank you, and thank you for your time, and have a great night.
Awesome. Thank you. Great. Thank you. You said 9:00 a.m. on the 15th is the parade?
Correct.
Exciting. Thank you very much. And we, and you have a guest with you tonight. You have a guest with you tonight. Would you like to introduce? That's called kindly decline. Okay, Mr. McCormick.
Alright. Good evening, everybody. So, obviously, April and May starts getting really busy for all of us at the schools, but we do have a couple of events coming up at the end of April. The first one will be, are you smarter than a middle schooler? That'll be April 11th in the FMS cafeteria. We're gonna start that at five o'clock. So, there will be some light refreshments, and then we're gonna play games, and we're gonna see how much I have forgotten over these years. I can imagine it's gonna be a lot, so. The next thing we have coming up is our TCAP testing will be the 17th through the 25th. We're gonna shoot for 8:30 to roughly 10:00, 10:30 every morning. We're asking that parents help us out by making sure the kids are well rested, and they get breakfast that morning, and everybody's on school on time, so that we can get testing started promptly. And then, that afternoon, we will have TCAP rewards and activities planned for the kids, so to kinda incentivize them doing their best and trying hard like I know they will. The last thing will be kind of our first big event in May, and that will be, May 4th will be our eighth grade night. That will be in the FMS gym, and we're gonna start that at 6:00 p.m. And so, we'll have the march, and then afterwards, the kids will eat, and they'll have a, have a dance in the cafeteria, so. But that is pretty much it for my report tonight.
Thank you. After four May, things really start to look to the end of the year.
Yeah, there, there's like 10 more dates in May, but I didn't wanna hit, hit those with you already tonight, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
But, thank y'all.
Appreciate it. Mr. Carron?
So, tonight, the high school has a special presenter as well, one of our young leaders. She's one of the, the best students that we have, Ms. India here. It's India Bryson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is India Bryson, and I'm a senior here at the high school. So, I just wanna let y'all know a couple of things that, that has happened within these past two months. So, one of our sophomores, Jacob King, has won the first place at the Tennessee State Math Competition in Algebra II. The juniors completed the ACT on March 27th. All students attended and took the test. Our spring sports teams have got off to a great start, and our season is continually going right now. We have 55 students that are doing enroll to take classes in the fall. We have five students that are going to be middle college students. These students will graduate with their associate's degree, as also with their high school diploma. We have 12 students that are currently enrolled within TCAP. This includes health science, industrial maintenance, and welding. Our prom is Saturday, April 13th. Grand March will start at five at the high school, and the dance will start at six at the museum. And also, wanted to let y'all know what's been going on with our FFA chapter. So, we just got back from our state convention. And we left March the 24th and got back on the 26th, actually. And it was a, we had a great time. Two of us got our state degrees, me and Ada Young got our state degrees, and we had a great time. Mr. Young and Ms. Young took us this time, and Mr. Sloan took us too. We just really had a great time enjoying our last state convention with each other, so it was amazing. Thank you.
And congratulations on your state appearance.
Thank you.
There's a lot to congratulate you about. She's, I happen to know from a number of sources that she is in great demand for some universities and being offered a fantastic amount of scholarship. I'm very proud of her.
She needs to tell y'all.
I would love it if, I don't wanna put her on the squad.
So, on March 22nd, I had TSU come down to talk to me about, about their school and the agricultural program, 'cause I wanna go to school for ATCOM. And they have invited, they invited me to come down toward the campus, and I'm basically, I'm gonna be going to TSU-
Okay.
-starting the fall. I'm going on a $12,000 grant from TSU. It's gonna help with my books, tuition, housing, and everything. So, it's basically kinda like a full ride almost, but not necessarily. I would like to thank Ms. Dotson for that. She helped me a lot with that. It's amazing. I hate to see it go, but it's time to start a new leaf, actually. But, I wanna say thank you to like everybody that actually has helped me. But, getting this from TSU and being able to meet the people that I will be dealing with. While I was in Gatlinburg, I actually got to meet the head of the ACT department, Ms. Lee. So, there, there was a great honor just to get to meet them and know a little bit more about them, and them getting to know more about me and what I wanna do when I get out of school. So, it was a great time, honestly.
That's awesome. We're a great representative of this school system.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
That's fantastic. Hard to top that. That's what we're here for, right? Send graduates off to do great things. Do we have anyone request to make public comments? No, sir, Mr. Chairman. Alright, we'll move along. Supervisor's report. I think Dr. Stiles is heading up a presentation for us tonight.
Well, I, I'm going to turn it over to our social workers. They are amazing. They've already accomplished so many things just in this first year, and it's, they were all hired through the Stronger Connections Grant, so I'm, I'm gonna let you guys take it away.
Welcome.
My name is Jennifer Taylor, and I'm the school social worker at Ralph Askins. I'm joined by-
Sheah Hicks. I'm at middle school.
And Candace Poliquin. I'll introduce Candace for you, because she's helping hand out, and we just, I'm a visual person, and it helps to have something in front of me, so I thought it might help have something in front of you guys too, so you can see. But, I'm gonna speak on behalf of all three of us, and then they're gonna interject if I miss anything or want to add anything. This is our first year of the Stronger Connections Grant, and we've been hard at work trying to figure out how to best meet the goals and needs of our schools. Each of, each of the needs in all of the schools are different. As you can imagine, elementary's gonna look different than what the middle school and high school looks like. So, I have it broken down into some things that we wanted to highlight for you. We are doing some things collaboratively together, and one of the biggest things is, and it's a huge part of our grant, and that is the community circles, in trying to build rapport and relationships among staff and students. And, so, at the, at the elementary level, we meet, they meet daily for about 15 minutes, and that consists of questions that then generate the conversations. At the middle school level, it looks a little bit different. And Sheah, I'll let you speak just a minute about how you guys run that there.
At the middle school, we meet once a week on Mondays, and we have, it's at the reading time, so we have 15 minutes where we get to meet and talk to kids, and they have a question, and they all respond. We get in a circle, they respond to the question, and then it's just open conversation from there.
And then, at the high school level, it even looks a little bit different than what it does at the elementary and middle school level.
Um, at the high school level, we follow the pretty much same procedure that the middle school does. We have a question, the prompt. They answer the prompt, and then we all have to stand in a circle, and then they also, at the very end, they have to write, and we all give them journals, and they have to write like a goal they would like to meet for that week, so that way, they have it written every week, and they can see it, and they can reflect whether or not they've met their goals. But, we do, we do our meet hours monthly.
So, you can see how it all looks di, very different. But, I can speak from the elementary level, and that our kids look forward to it every day. One of the teachers last week didn't have time to do it, and one of the kids said that's what they missed most about their day. They look forward to that time to be able to talk. So, it's, it is working. It is gonna take some time to implement and kinda just get, the teachers get used to it, but again, it's our first year, and, you know, next year, we hope that'll even be bigger and better.
Even at the high school level, so this month, we weren't able to meet because we had a student taking the ACTs, and we didn't wanna, you know, distract them, obviously. So, I had a student come to me today, and he was like, "How come we didn't have our, our morning meeting this month?" And I was like, "I'm sorry, we'll have it next month." So, even at the high school level, that's something that they do look forward to.
Also, something we've collaboratively been working on is through Coordinated School Health, and she helped get us food and snack items to help supplement. You know, we all get Bob bags that we send home weekly with our students that need those, but Carla was able to get with us, and we've been able to supplement or have snacks within our room. Or, Sheah has really done something really great at the middle school, where she's created hangry bags that she's given to the teachers, and so, the teachers have it for if a kid just needs a snack sometime during the day, they know to get that. So, that's been really great. Personal care items, we have those available for the students, ready to go if they need them, we can give them to them. And then, clothing, through Clothe Our Kids, that's a constant that we all have. We have kids that need clothes, so we can, you know, easily collaborate and work with them. Also, Knights of Columbus and the Outlook Store out of Pulaski was gracious enough to donate coats to us this year, so all of us have been able to, to do that. And then, also, I wanna mention something else that we collaboratively have been working on is our monthly virtual meetings. So, we are working with a company that is putting on these virtual parent trainings for the whole school system, and they can go on and register, obviously, but then we also get the recordings that we can then post on our websites. And we have done the effects of vaping, we, child anxiety, and an overview of your child's mental health, but they've all, it's all very good information to get out there to the parents. So, those are collaborative projects that we've worked on. Some things that we've done specifically at the elementary school level are recognizing a student faculty on fire every month, and I got Rick's BBQ to agree to give us $10 gift cards, so we give one faculty, so that's a teacher, one support staff every month, and then two students, a lower grade and an upper grade student. So, we reward those, and they get a little torch to carry around and have their picture put up there, so it's exciting. We've also implemented Calm Down carts, so again, through Coordinated School Health, we were able to purchase carts and put Calm Down items in all of our classrooms, along with posters for the Zones of Regulation and Feelings Wheels, and all the things that support that social emotional development, which is really base level interventions, which has been great. Also, starting a mentoring program there, still working on getting that going, but we have it somewhat going, but working with local churches, community organizations, and pairing our kids with mentors, so that they have that somebody that can come in and provide some extra support and, and give them some attention. We also just recently did our first women's meet and greet at Ralph Askins, which was really great. We had a great response, and that was thanks to Officer Ivy. He had started it with the men, so now we've incorporated that. The middle school they're doing, Sheah has done Lunch on the Green, which has been great, and she had a great response to that. She's also working a lot on attendance and attendance issues to prevent chronic absenteeism and tardiness. And so, and then she's also implemented a table talk, which is a lunch initiative, so special invites for lunch with her as well. And then, Candace has done a fabulous thing at the high school, which has been the Birthday Club. So, every student gets a signed, every faculty and staff member sign the birthday card for the kid, each kid, and then she recognizes them every month and gives them a cupcake for their birthday. So, that's been really good. She's also done Student of the Month, and also Senior Showcase. She's also worked a whole lot with children experiencing homelessness and helping them get housing resources and things like that. So, it's hard to cram what we do in such a short timeframe, but I know we're on limited time, so I just kinda wanted to give you an overview. Like I said, we recently got to go to New York City, which was a, a great experience for us, but we had wonderful training there that we hope to bring back and be able to implement some things, hopefully, next year. We came back with some ideas I think we wanna do, so. And we just appreciate your support, and thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight.
Any questions?
And if anybody, yeah, if anybody has any questions, we'll be glad to take them, or you can reach out to us at any time, and we'll all be glad to talk to you about what we do.
Do you have, is it, if it's appropriate, I wanna, like an example of one of the prompts that you would use, another probably age dependent, when you get into your community circles. What kind of, what, what's kinda prompting the conversation there?
One that we've done in our, in the high school is, if you could travel anywhere in the world, where would you wanna go?
What we just did was, what is the one person that inspires you and why?
And that's what I was fixing to say. We, we all have somebody within our school that works with us. As part of our grant, we were able to provide a stipend to a, to a member of the faculty that will support us in helping us get this going. And so, my person at the elementary level is our school counselor, so she helps a lot with this. And she does our questions, and I love it because she coordinates the questions with whatever is going on. So, like for Black History Month, a lot of our questions stemmed around that. And so, I think one of the questions that we had was what, you know, who's the person that inspires you the most? So, and then that just generates conversation. We also have, because we do it daily, a lot of the teachers on, at the end of the week, will have a, like a free time, where if a student wants to share something, then they can have the opportunity to share that. The whole piece of this community circle is learning to wait and learning to talk when it's your time to talk, and so, they have to have the talking piece, which is any item in the classroom that the teacher really wants to use. We have little microphones that they have, but they have to have the talking piece to be able to talk. So, the teacher does have some control over that, obviously, but-
The one thing I will say is, when we did the one that inspired you the most, middle schoolers, sometimes they can be silly, they don't wanna talk or whatever. When it comes to circle time, they take it dead serious, and they want to talk, and they will tell you who inspires them, and I always, I'll come back on the second round, sometimes we'll have time, and say, "Why did you pick that person?" You, some of the answers is, like, it'll tear you up sometimes.
And we don't, I, I, we didn't have time to show it, but I've had some teachers submit videos where they have done, one teacher, the way she gets them to the circle in the mornings is she plays, "Everybody Come Together," and she plays that song, and then they get in the circle, and then they say affirmations to one another. And so, it's pretty powerful, because that starts before they even start the discussion of the questions, and they do that every day, so.
Well, we'll never know the voids and needs in life fully. We know a lot of them because you see them, but there will be children's lives changed because of all of this, so thank you. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Williams.
I think Ms. Dotson also-
Oh, okay.
Is that right?
No worries, but yes.
Okay.
If you want to skip any, I'll-
It's not on here, so.
Oh, it's a separate.
But, I know she's here to share some information.
Absolutely. Let's do it.
No worries.
So, I wanna brag on Spencer and, and his staff. He always gets nervous when I say that. One of the things we're really working on is ACT. Very excited to get those scores. They've done some very, very serious work on improving that, and I'm very appreciative of him and very appreciative of his staff. Very excited to tell you how that turns out. Steve wanted me to share with you that testing is next week. That'll be started, feeling really good about it. Everybody's prepared. He's put a lot of effort in that. Sure, it's gonna go great. The Give Grant 3.0, didn't know if I'd mentioned that to you guys. We're gonna do a collaborative grant with Motlow with the intent, that's a $2 million grant. They will be the fiscal agent, which makes Lisa very happy. But, the idea is to potentially put in a dual enrollment surgical tech program at Motlow that students would participate in. That would also include Lincoln County, Moore County, and Franklin County-Huntland students, and a way to potentially get our cybersecurity course back, which would also be a dual enrollment that they would handle. Also, some of you didn't get an opportunity to take our errands tour before when we went through. Of course, it's even better and more fabulous than it was. Leadership Lincoln's gonna be touring that facility Thursday morning at 9:00 a.m. If you would like to jump into that and you happen to be around, let me know, because I know I've got somebody else, and I'm gonna jump in purposely to get to show them the welding program. So, I just wanted to share that. But, if you guys have any questions or thinking about that? Awesome. Oh, awesome. This might go as fast as our morning meeting.
Catch, we catch. Now, Ms. Williams.
So, the March revenue and expenditure reports were emailed out earlier, and this is just for information only, and I just, I wonder if any questions you may?
Are we generally where we expect to be?
In comparison to last year, yes. The-
I was looking at revenues, for example.
Yes. The revenues received, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we are. And the TISA, we have received like 6.4 billion as a, in March, with the TISA funding.
Any questions about the monthly expenditures and revenues? Alright, thank you. Committee reports, facilities and transportation.
I'll begin with transportation. Our buses are just deciding to not cooperate with us. We have one driver, and they, every time they drive a bus, it breaks down. It's just Murphy's Law type situation, but I wanna express to the board that that's something that is going on, so we do have a couple of buses that are down, and we're in the process of having them fixed. One's at the shop right now. One is broke down in the gravel lot. We've got an answer for, we have a solution for the problems, but there are problems. And over time, we do have, we have purchased a bus for next year. We'll probably rotate the oldest bus out and just keep it as a spare bus, but that's something that we're dealing with on a regular basis right now. It goes and fits and starts, so I would say, once we get these repairs made, we'll probably be in good shape for a while until the next cycle of whatever's going on. There's no rhyme or reason to it, just, you know, belts break and gaskets, you know, go bad, and it is what it is.
Is supply chain okay these days?
No, I mean, it's, it's, no, but it's better than it, it's better than it is worse. So, I don't know that those supply chains are really gonna be as that looks like they were pre-2020. I don't know that we'll be there again any, in, you know, any reasonable near future, but things are attainable, and the prices are a little better. We don't have to source everything through Canada, which would work for about a year, everything had to come through Canada. So, it is better, but it's, there's still some room for improvement on that as well. As far as facilities, things are going well in the building. We have seen some, our first signs of some savings due to the, the new HVAC systems and LED lighting, and we're starting to see a return on our investment with some of those things, and that's, that's encouraging, that's nice, 'cause that'll be a perpetual savings, so that's something we're excited, very much excited about, looking forward to, you know, the course of an entire calendar year to see what all the seasons do. Could be substantial.
No update from FEMA?
Well, no. No, there's no update from FEMA, but we have, I'll update the board on what we've done locally. I had Greg from Broadus and Associates, and I also had an architect from JBHM come out, and we have presented informational meeting at the utility board, as well as the local, the Fayetteville Regional Planning Commission. So, we've put it out there that way as the projects do move to a point where maybe the FEMA states, people, lets the whole batch go through, we can hit the ground running and then ask for votes, approval, and, you know, all the bidding and the, may grease the wheels and make it just way there or so. I mean, we're still excited that the possibility that this stuff will come through in, in the near future as opposed to years, so. But, as far as when that is, I could, still don't know.
Okay. Well, thanks for that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, finance committee has several things tonight and will rely on Ms. Williams to lead some of these, but these first few things are pretty, pretty much housekeeping. There is a FY24 general purpose line item amendment number three, which involves movement of some $4,000 and $3,000 respectively for sped grant and ISM grant. It's just moving among some lines in the existing budget. So, I would ask that we approve this, I'd make a motion that we approve this amendment number three to the general purpose. You have a second? Any questions, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right, thank you. And we also have a amendment number four to the general purpose budget for FY24 and it involves $18,000 that is being moved among categories for, and it's related to the ISM grant. So, I would, I would make a motion that we approve budget amendment number four. And I have a second, comments, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And then we have an invoice, number 22, we want to think about monthly invoices and how long the FEMA project has been going on, that's several months, probably some months without invoices actually.
Actually, that's what this is, catching up in the dead period.
But anyway, this particular invoice was for $9,667.50 and we're, refresh my memory, will this have to go to the, this, we send all of these through the city.
We do.
They'll have awareness of that. Mr. Alden, thank you. So, I'll make a motion that we approve, recommend the proven payment for that invoice number 22. And I have a second, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, and then we come to the exciting moment of the night, which is a look at our FY25 budget. And Ms. Williams, you want to kind of walk us through tonight, kind of the way we did at the finance committee?
So, that is actually 26 pages of the 25 budget, but the first page that is, is the summary of all the pages, one through 25.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this was in the email today, Friday, Friday, Friday email. I have a hard copy from finance committee, but your email on Friday should have the full budget in it.
So, the projected revenues is 13,175,673 dollars and the projected expenditure is 13,175,673 dollars. And this does include a 5% increase for staff. And this also does include an adjustment to our health insurance to get that more in line with our surrounding systems and to make it kind of work even more across for all categories.
Things we had talked about in the one session. Yeah, glad you made those goals. That's good. So, that is the general, does anyone have questions, specific questions about the 20, FY25 general purpose budget? Okay. Okay, I was going to say that we're at a point to take a motion to approve that budget for next year. I have a motion, I'll second that. Anyone have comments or questions, last call? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right, well then, we have now approved our general purpose budget for '25, well done. And then we have a few other things to take care of.
So, the next is the cafeteria budget for FY25 and the amount of 947,608 dollars. That also does include a 5% increase in this budget. Okay, so if you have any questions, this budget.
And one thing we did ask about at the finance committee had to do with the grant that is providing the free breakfast and lunch for our students, and that does continue and you'll see that on page two of that cafeteria budget. So, great for our students there. All right, all in paper, let's see, I don't think we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion now to approve the cafeteria budget for 20 FY25, I'll second that. All in paper, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no, great.
And the next budget is the FY25 capital projects budget. Page one is the summary for 14,188,34. And then on page two is a listing of what we're projecting to spend in FY25. Any questions?
Noteworthy from the finance committee meeting was the interest income on our, on our capital projects budget because we act, interest rates are up and we've been through a lot of lean years on really just not even drawing enough interest to matter, but this is a projection for FY25, right, based on the investments we've made. So, it's, it's a guaranteed investment, 562,800 of the interest income for those accounts. So, that's a real blessing for our capital projects budget, sure is. Okay. Okay, I have a motion, I'll second it. All in paper, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right, and then we have salary scales for all of our employees.
So, the first one is the teachers and principal salary scale for FY24-25 and this is our salary scale that we're projecting with a 5% increase. And we're mandated by the state that we have to be at entry level for 4,4,500 for a teacher for next year and we are at 46,283 for entry level for a new teacher. And that is the teacher and the principal scale. Any questions with this scale?
Any other questions about the, now, this is strictly the teachers and principals scale that we're talking about now. And it does have that 5% increase, so I'll make a motion that we approve this salary schedule. And I have a second, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right.
The second salary schedule is the system wide and for FY25, this also includes 5% increase and this is for central office and there's a few teachers that serve all three schools that would fall into this, on this schedule. Ask you if you have any questions?
Yes. Evidently not. So, I'll make a motion that we approve this system wide salary schedule. And I have a second, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
And the last salary scale is for support staff and with the 5% increase, I did want to point out that we added three levels for nurses pay and for LPN, RM with associates and RM with the veterans. We've added steps in to increase their salaries.
Make us more competitive to be able to recruit and retain.
Correct.
All right, got a motion? And I'll second. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. And then we have supplements, right?
Yes, the first one is the Ralph Askin supplement and there is one supplement that is on their list for FY24-25 for additional salaries.
And it has not changed from this year till next year. All right, I'll make a motion, we approve the Ralph Askin supplement for next school year. And a second, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no, thank you.
And the next supplement is for the middle school for FY24-25. And that hasn't changed from last year either. They're all the same from last year.
All right, I'll make a motion, we approve the middle school supplements. Have a second, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay.
And the final supplement is for the high school for FY24-25.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve. And I have a second, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Well done this week. That was, that's your busiest meeting of the year with the board with all of those things that happened. It's great to have that. Appreciate all your hard work in making all of those possible in a timely manner. And so, now that the board has approved it, we'll send it to the city.
Yes, they will. They have a nice agenda.
Perfect.
We are scheduled to meet with the city administrator and some other personnel who need to stay together.
Oh, it's been from this week? Okay. Okay, insurance and policy.
I have three policies tonight.
You look like you were looking at someone else. You have the report.
She was giving the nine. I have three tonight. I move we approve policies 2.400, revenues on second reading.
Got a motion? And a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right.
I move we approve policy 3.219, use of unmanned aircraft systems on second readings.
All right, got a motion? And a second, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
I move to approve policy 5.305, family and medical leave on second reading.
Got a motion? And a second, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
Tomorrow night, April 12.
Okay. Policy committee, okay. Thanks for all of your hard work. Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Really, what I'd like to say as part of my report from superintendent's chair is how much I appreciate the faculty and staff in all the building. This is the time of year where we go through the process of mandated state testing and it's, for public schools, those tests are somewhat high stakes. The teachers put a lot of effort and energy into making sure they're doing the best. We have a lot of good people who are interacting with our students and doing fantastic work and I just wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude for all the good work that they do and all the effort they put in, the stress management that they basically model for all of our young people to teach them how to do a good job of coping with stressors and, and putting your best foot forward in order to provide good service to your fellow men. I appreciate them.
Great, appreciate that. No other report?
No other report.
Okay, well, just a couple of things. We have a resolution this month, a resolution of appreciation for our support staff and you'll note that this includes school secretaries, bookkeepers, attendance clerks, receptionists, our SROs, teacher assistants, nurses, and grannies from the foster grandparents programs at Ralph Askins and Fayetteville Middle School. So, this is a resolution of appreciation for them, outstanding group, dedicated school employees who care deeply about the students. I think that probably is, says it all right there. And our resolution would be that the board establishes April 4th as the support staff appreciation day and encourages our schools to recognize and show their own individual appreciation at school level for all that they are doing. So, I have a motion that we approve this resolution. And I have a second, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right, well then, a couple of scheduling matters at hand. In your email today, I believe, Ms. Williams included the superintendent's evaluation instrument that will, will officially tonight, at this moment, ask you to take a, I don't know, some period of time TBD to add your accomplishments and to that Word file and then provide it back to the board members. Our next board meeting is ordinarily be the 6th of May. Is everybody good that day? As far as you know, schedule wise, we'll need a quorum for sure. So, okay, we'll proceed as it's 6th May at 5:00. What we've historically done is done the director's evaluation in a work session like the hour before. Is that possible to do a 4:00 work session that day? If not, we can break tradition, whatever.
I said, go ahead, plan, I can.
Okay, we can shift around if we need to, but that gives us, you okay?
Can we get a hard copy of the thing?
We will, we will.
She didn't, get your date together. She kept her head on a gem.
If it pleases the board, then we'll go ahead and schedule a work session at 4:00 on Monday, the 6th of May for the purpose of doing the superintendent's evaluation. So, we will need a little time for scoring purposes and whatnot, so as I'm looking at the calendar, what's a reasonable time for you to provide your response to the?
I could.
This is the 8th, isn't it?
Could have it to everyone by the 24th. Is that enough time?
Oh, it's plenty. Why don't you say, give yourself till the end of that week, don't rush it.
Well, I, the 24th is, I have obligations out of town with some state stuff anyway, so.
Okay, okay, so if you'll have your inputs, just, if you'll just email them back, that's, that's fine, right? Then we can just print out our own hard copies, is that okay? Okay. You just said you wanted a hard copy, I would make sure.
I mean, we need it before we.
Right, right, right. So, if he gets, if he is, submits his response on the 24th, then we, that would be in a, via an email to all the board, right?
Absolutely.
Then you'll, we would have, that would actually be over a week and a half to, which would include two weekends plus a full week, yeah, that'd be enough, right, for us to print it out and score. And then come to the, come to the work session with our numbers and we'll consolidate all the scores. Does that make sense, that work? All right, well then, that's what we will do. That was it, right? You're only asked about the main meeting, but we already concluded that, so. And you have the evaluation officially, right, because we approved it and do you need us to, well, you were on the distribution for the email today.
Yeah, I think I'll get one, I'll check tomorrow for email if anything. If you're good or if there's a file that's not working.
Okay, super, just let us know. Great, all right, board members, anything else? Anything from, anything from the high school, from our student group?
You do have something that you, okay, so, as senior president, I think I'm going to do my last token to my grade is I'm going to host a senior brunch for our grade and I have a place to host it, I'm going to be hosting at the Hope Assembly Church of God Hospitality Hall. And I was, we're looking for sponsors to help cater the food and stuff like that, so I was asking, is there anybody that y'all know that I can reach out to or if any of y'all would like to help sponsor this event for me?
Okay. Do you have an estimate of how much money?
So, right now, I've reached out to a couple of catering options in town, is in like Vino's and then. Vino's and then there's the, yeah, and that as well and I have, I'm going to send out invitations like tomorrow, so to our um, senior class and have them RSVP and stuff like that as well, so then I'll have an estimated number of how many students will be there and the price of it. What day is it? It's going to be May eleventh, it's the Saturday before graduation and the brunch will be held from ten thirty to um, ten, ten thirty to twelve.
And probably be a good idea as you get the estimation and get the RSVPs, you can send that back out and everyone who's interested in participating and donating can do that and also come up with ideas of people that you can seek out, you know, depending on the, on my license and things like that, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's a neat idea.
May eleventh.
The board members have a history of generosity, so, so please let us know as soon as you know and you might be surprised how generous this group of people will be, right?
Especially the son.
That's exciting, I, we've never known that.
Have to be the first one, hopefully, the next senior body president will take it on as well and do a tradition.
Thanks for sharing that with us and please keep us in the loop so we can, we can help. Stroll, or anything from the city?
Our reg department's just started our volleyball program, uh, want to thank the middle school for letting us use the gym, a big turnout, about eighty-three kids showed up, eleven to twelve teams, I think, so very, very good turnout and we're very proud of how that's, that's going.
And this will be the first ever city volleyball league, right, yeah, that's fantastic.
I was able to attend one of my daughters participating, it was really well run, nice, good representations uh, across the board and seemed like a very successful day.
Well, I know he's proud, he did a good job.
He's trying to work.
He'll be, he'll be aggressive. All right, board members, anything else before we adjourn? Okay, or we will stand and adjourn, thank you.